Calling the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. And if everybody could please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And first up, we have Ashley McBride Architects and Turner Construction Company to provide an update on the Capitol project.
It just, it makes it more difficult for the people who are online.
Sure. Sure. Everybody hear me? Perfect. So my name is Greg Warner. I'm from Ashley McBride Architects. I am the lead designer on the project. Our project manager could not be down here tonight, but I wanted, we wanted to give a brief overview. Status update of where we're at on the Capitol project. So you'll see up here on the screen that we are progressing through our design. So we just completed schematic design. We are on to design development, which will be completed February 22. So by the end of next month. So now that we've completed schematic design, a lot of our plan implementation is complete. You've had multiple stakeholder meetings for each program space. And so now we're really looking at what these spaces look like three dimensionally, how they fit in with the rest of the building. So what we wanted to do is kind of share some renderings, some progress, photos of what we have to date. And scroll the next couple of slides. Right here is just again, an overview of the scope for each building. And you'll see on the left, the pool renovation, the UPK addition, the track, excuse me. The track and then the concession restroom building we will be talking about today. So this is the pool addition. So you're looking at, from the public area, the parking view, walking into the CEA building. Next slide here is really looking from the math and science wing at the high school, looking towards CEA. This image is looking from the end of the high school canopy towards the CEA building. This is a quick interior shot, looking from the lobby of CEA into the pool. This is the UPK. So the UPK addition will be a continuation of the previous UPK, looking at some of the playground area. Backside of the addition. This is looking from the athletic field side.
Can you talk about that one little area that person walked in, Greg?
Oh, sure. So where you see that person kind of walking through the doorway there. The district had requested an exterior access to a toilet facility. So a lot of your upper fields get used. There's a porta john or a porta potty that's typically alongside that building. So what we did was we incorporated that into our design of UPK addition. So that anybody that's using those fields on the upper side has a public area to use the restroom facility. So that little bump out is what you see there. This is a shot of the interior of the UPK. It's got a very similar feel and layout to the existing UPK. The only difference here is the toilet rooms have been flipped to the outside room. So you have just a different casework configuration in these rooms. Here's another interior shot, looking back towards the outside wall. This is a corridor shot, looking down from what would be the extension of the previous UPK addition through to the new UPK addition. We're not showing any teaching steps or anything like that, but a little bit of a reconfiguration, some flexible furniture. So this is an updated slide showing the artificial turf field. You'll see that we've kind of landed the concession building down there. You see the little letter A. Which shows the concession building, a reorientation of the basketball court. So that is staying, but it's just being kind of reoriented, shifted, incorporated into that paved area. You'll see we made some refinements to the high jump area as well as the triple, the long jump. And ball ball area. You'll see off to the right. We've moved some of the throwing events to the other side of the field. Because there was some safety concern about people walking up and down the pathway off of the 90s wing. Portion of the building. Here you'll see an updated rendering of the concession building. And entrance portion. Ticketing on this side and concession side facing the field. A little bit of branding show. I'm starting to think about adding some of those pieces to the building. I went through that a little quick, but if anybody has any questions or you want to go back through any of those renderings, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sure.
When you, Katie, I'm just watching some of the shows on, and also the governor in New York has talked about year 2027 and about being totally energy efficient. Done any consideration in the field area for, as you, I know we're bringing lights in and we're bringing, that's intended. Doing anything for energy.
Sure. So the lights that'll be designed are LED. So they won't have a like long turn on time. Any of the energy consumption for any of those pieces in terms of energy usage down the field. The concession building itself is only in season when the field's in season. So technically you won't have any usage in that building either. Unless it's a in sport season. Any other considerations you were thinking about?
Seeing what kind of looking forward, what kind of things we can do to decrease the carbon output.
Sure. Yeah, we can actively pursue that.
Any other questions from the board? Just can we get an updated copy of that?
Yeah, we appreciate Ashley and Turner coming down. I think the last time we saw them was Octoberish. You know, at that point, they just let us know what's going to take place next few months. And this was a target board meeting where we would hear from them again. As we were hoping, they brought some enhanced renderings based off some of that feedback discussion. We were just talking about that bathroom access over the, behind the CEA. So you know, the fact that we can incorporate something like that. I think that's a, it's a great piece to it. But um, so again, as we get these renderings and you know, they get further defined and more meetings, I'm sure, you know, Ashley and Turner come back down with additional updates or any along the way, you know, if we need something, in the meantime, they're always just to call away.
For the field, is there going to be storage for things like that's equipment specific on the whole thing set up for the hurdles and then going to be storage for all the field.
Sure. So we started to evaluate what that looks like under some of the bleacher areas. It can't be fully enclosed per code, but it can be changed in and locked so that you guys can, it can be protected pretty much from the weather and be locked up. But it can't have like a roof or walls or anything. What's that? Oh, that's just part of the code. We're not allowed to put a
Because you technically, when you put people on there, it falls.
When you put folks on to the bleachers, it technically becomes an occupancy. So then there's occupancy requirements for folks exiting from the bleachers. So I won't say it can't be, but it gets a lot more complicated to try and then have all the life safety measures in place for occupancy on bleachers. Where you're storing stuff underneath it. So as Greg said, if you, you stick to like an open storage and, and limit that a little bit from a code wise and from a cost perspective wise, it's, it's, it's better. Because you, sorry. You technically, you get a certificate of occupancy for the bleachers themselves because of that component of it.
I guess if that's the case, why wouldn't we have a separate building that has enclosure? I mean, things like fullville pits and, or the, the Mattson things that being left out and the weather would probably be a terrible thing to do.
It'll be protected by the bleachers actually, from a, from a weather perspective. The bleachers are, are fully covered. You get very little kind of in between, you know, the snow, the rain will catch up. But it will be like it's out in the rain the whole time.
So they're, they're not going to be like they are now?
Hopefully bleachers, they're going to be good wall bleachers?
Yeah, they're going to be fully enclosed, if you will, the top side. So you won't have any backstop or anything that like kind of shove through the bleacher itself. Be a fully enclosed bleacher from the top side.
I'm sorry, I'm still picturing what we have out there and
Right. Those are an open, they're an open riser, right?
I think we've had discussion too about, you know, how to maximize the space below. And honestly, this was a discussion we had in the planning phase. And it came down to really budget limitations because of how much work we're doing. So I think we even talked about, you know, how can we transition a future project to add restrooms or storage or train, changing rooms below the bleachers? And I, we were talking about even for now, building something to lead into that, like whether it's even just a pad down there or you know, anything to help along the way and not to talk, you know, badly about the architects or the district manager. But sometimes when you make these buildings for storage, it becomes a lot more complicated through SCD and the building project. Like for right now, again, if we want to just go buy a shed, we can go buy a shed. If we tell them, build us a storage shed, then it's a whole other mess of hurdles and rules and guidelines they have to follow in order to get us to get everyone, the whole project. We actually have more legal ways to do that outside of project.
I, I appreciate that. I just, equipment, upkeep of the equipment, just instead of buying more equipment sooner that was being taken care of, it should last a lot longer. So that, that addressed it. Thank you. I wasn't aware. So that all of that.
I have a quick question. So the concession stand. Is that, I couldn't quite tell from the rendering. So the bathrooms that are in the concession stand, right? There's restrooms there. Are, are they locked inside? Or is that, are they going to be open to the public? Like when we do have other things going on?
Yeah. So, and we talked about what do we envision for this building in the winter months? Because again, it's impacting design already. And we didn't see, again, at least through the current discussion, the benefit of leaving that open through the winter months. So that way, the whole different type of winterization you'd have to do for the building. Right. But in theory, you know, when spring sports roll around all through summer and fall, it could be occupied. That's kind of what we're envisioning. Again, I don't remember the details of where we land with bathrooms, but you let them go around this right hand side where you see the logo, that's kind of the entrance way into the restroom facilities. And how many stalls we have for men and women.
So there's, there's three on each side. Correct.
Are they going to be non-gender?
We struggled with that through a lot of conversation. And at the end of the day, we, we went with maximizing facilities. Because anytime when we looked at adding in a gender neutral type of area, it impacted how many we had. And I think our goal of having this prestigious field of letting hosting events and you know, the rushes for bathrooms are always at the same time, right? Halftime, after the game, it seemed like maximizing the restroom facilities was a priority.
Not that I'm against male female Russians, okay, but I know what's happening in New York State. And I know, working at the college, they have maximized bathroom space by actually making bathrooms in a bathroom. So there's a big bathroom, but they've done concrete walls, straight street. So you can go into a wash area and then everybody has bathrooms. So it's a non-gender neutral bathroom and you're staying within code and all those kinds of things. I don't know if it can still be considered, but I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah. And again, it was a lengthy talking point during these meetings. But yeah, I think anything at this point is, you know, I don't want to say it's finalized, but I don't know. Again, the length, if anyone wanted to add to
Well, we didn't talk about that scenario. We talked about adding like another stall that would be a family gender neutral, whatever bathroom in addition to those. And that it was taking away from the business. So I don't, I mean, I think that's within, so what she's saying is that within those bathrooms, that they're each private.
It's really a unique model that they've done up at Portland, just to try to, you know, get away from all the issues that are happening, but make it right for the state laws and all the funding that we and still make it respectable for us to prefer male and female restrooms. So, yeah, so.
Yeah, certainly.
Just to make each one of those units just private.
Sure.
And did we decide on a restroom up near the pool area? I know, I didn't get to all the sessions, but I've been to a few here and there, but how about, was there able to create one that's going to be outside inside of the pool area or not?
Not where, again, we, I think in the line of thinking and where the need was, we went with the location of the 3K addition.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that that was talked about. I didn't see any of the renderings for like the inside of the building yet, like the office space. Is that going to be a different time? Like I didn't see like the office space in the pool area. I didn't see the office space in the elementary building. Are those coming at a different time or to look at?
I'll let Greg talk about that. Stacy, can you just maybe focus back, go up back up to the four and ring inside?
Sure. Yeah, as the design continues to progress, we can pull out components of each one of these spaces and render them separately. So you guys can get a better visualization of what those look like. The, the office location is actually out of the frame of this rendering off to the right, right inside the pool area. But yeah, we can certainly provide those as we, as we continue to refine through the design process.
I think it'd be important for us to see them.
Sure, sure. These are just the big hit, big program spaces that we've been working.
Look at the bleachers though. Look at the bleachers. You know, bleachers, great.
But all the small things add up.
Why don't we put some logos and branding on walls, Tim, Greg?
Absolutely. Scoreboards haven't been modeled in yet and our record for those kind of things. So again, as it each, each step will get a little bit more refined. We'll have a little bit more detail on each one of these renderings.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Comments, suggestions?
I guess I said one more and I'm sorry, if this is like discussed, but oh, there's no diving area. Is there or no?
But they still have to do the diving board up and down because they're not actually making the pool that much bigger. At least that's what
There's not a separate diving.
Okay.
But there's diving gaps.
I don't see any more questions from the board. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening. Okay, we do have a need for an executive session at this time. We are going to recess the public meeting at 6:25 to hear discussion on contractual issues. May have a motion. I have Chris and Kathy. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained?
And I thought
Okay, we are going to reconvene our regular meeting at six forty. Correspondence, there is none. Policies for first reading, there are none. Policies for second reading, there are none. That brings us to our first opportunity for comments from the public. The Board of Education encourages public expression on school-related matters. Public comments that deal with personnel matters and or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals, either directly or indirectly, will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central School District Policy three two three zero, public complaints, questions of a specific nature should be directed to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chairperson has the right to limit and or extend any and all discussions as her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. And comments will be limited to three minutes per person. That being said, is there anybody who would like to take advantage of the opportunity to speak? And just as a reminder, there is a second opportunity at the end of the meeting.
It has to like warm up for a sec. I understand.
No, it's not.
Okay, so I'm Valerie Prescott. I am lucky enough to be employed here as the literacy coordinator in the CEA. I also live in Lyle and have two students who attend, two children who are students in the high school. So I'm here to address concerns about the academic eligibility procedures and policies in our school. While I have addressed this with Ms. Hayes, Ms. Sexton, and Mr. Sweeney via email and or phone, I wanted to be sure as this topic comes up for evaluation that you have a voice attached to the reasons I feel that this should change. Also, since I last was in contact with administration, other conversations regarding this topic have occurred largely in a group text that we lovingly call the Basketball Moms. It's all the moms of the varsity boys' basketball team. I would love to share with permission and without names some of the texts from the group so you get a sense for the socially emotional state of many of our athletes. I'm asking you to hear this and remember how, as a district, we say we prioritize the social emotional health of our kids. In closing, I would just like to say that the policy, the academic eligibility policy, was created in nineteen ninety-one and it was last modified in two thousand and nine. And I just want to say that things are different and I feel like this policy should be too. Kelly Brewer will share those texts with you.
Valerie?
Yes.
Can I just confirm, are you talking about the academic eligibility policy for sports athletes?
Yes, for student athletes, right. Yep. Sorry, I didn't say that.
Hi there, I'm Kelly Brewer. I am a parent of a senior here at the high school and two fairly recent graduates. Some of the comments in the text thread, just to share with you. You know, parents said, I'm in the same boat with my child. I've reached out to teachers for help, reached out to guidance for help, taken away the Xbox, no motivation for them at all. And now, instead of help, I'm begging my, for my son to, you know, to do more. I've been on my child, he doesn't care. Why would they? They just come off of a year where a lot of people didn't care. You know, the bar was kind of set low. And unfortunately, you know, we see the value in education, but sometimes our kids don't. And I'm not really sure how we get them to change that. One comment is, you know, we have daily fights about my child's academics since the pandemic began. I'm incredibly frustrated with the amount of senseless work. And I'm on twenty-four seven, but I can't make him do the work sadly. Another, which is quite sad, I feel like my kid has lost himself. Parents, you know, said that we're all in the same boat, our kids are suffering academically and emotionally. And I really believe that, you know, just as the Board of Regents has canceled the Regents exams for the last year and a half, like, we can't go with this the same way that we always have. I think that, you know, pre-pandemic, maybe this is a little different and certainly a policy of two thousand and nine, probably at this point should be looked at again. But, you know, I think to remember that these are young-minded people in big bodies and that they look like they should be able to think and prioritize and organize and all of those things, but sadly, they can't. And in this last year and a half, they've really lost that ability to do that.
Okay, so I'm Mary Standish-Whorpes. I also am fortunate enough to work in the district. I work in the high school. And I also have one student child that's a tenth grader, that's an athlete. I've had three that have previously gone through that have been athletes. So they wanted me to read some of the texts, and I will. But I, I kind of would like to stop and portray, well, put my work hat on for a minute. I sit there and watch these kids, you know, discouragingly being called down to the office. I'm just wondering why they're held to a different standard than maybe a booster club or an art club or any other club that's in the school. They're expected to maintain a certain average. They're expected to not be failing any subjects in order to play on the court or on the field. And for some of these kids, that's the reason why they come to school. That's the reason why they're here and they're, they're being active with their friends. So I, I just wanted to make sure that didn't get lost in the shuffle. So let's see. One says, I don't know how to change their mindsets. I feel like one positive thing my child has going for him is going to practice. These kids have suffered so much. How about if administration finds ways to support them? Kids all over our district are struggling. It's very hard every day. I truly feel that together there can be changes. We can get the ball rolling. While my child is not fighting the academic battle currently, my heart aches for all of these kids. Totally agree. Kudos to the teachers as well as they are doing their best. I know I never feel like there's enough hours in the day to reach all the parents of kids struggling, not just academically, but mentally as well. And I mean, just as a mom, a tenth grader last year, they struggled, struggled terrible. It was isolation, total isolation. So I guess maybe what we're trying to say is it's a different time and we have to maybe revisit that policy and change a few things. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Cheryl Tonerentz. I too am fortunate who have worked in the district for twenty years. And while I don't reside in this district, it's always been our home. We've done all the community activities through here. My kids are fortunate enough to have come here. My son is a senior now. And I'm definitely standing with the moms that spoke already. And I'm here to talk to you about the code of conduct for spectators at sporting events, specifically how that impacts our student section. First and foremost, I know I speak for many when I say how grateful we are to be able to watch sporting events in person again. And thank you to the district for all your hard work, procedures, and protocols to make that happen. I've had the opportunity to be on the sidelines of many sporting events from youth club, modified high school, and even travel leagues with my own children and at the college and professional levels as well. I think you'll agree with me that the cheers from spectators can have a dramatic effect on the climate, spirit, and outcome of a game, no matter what the level or sport. The Whitney Point High School varsity boys' basketball team experienced this recently at a home game. It was a tough game with a worthy opponent. Our boys played hard and hung tough during a close game. They fed off the crowd encouragement. Every one of those boys will tell you that they felt the pull of the crowd, specifically the student section that evening. It was so empowering. Unfortunately, this all changed when we started the fourth quarter. Some students were spoken to, signs removed, cheers discouraged, and we lost. I'm not saying anyone is to blame. Just know that there was a noticeable change in climate and outcome in the entire gym. This is not a new issue. As an active member of that booster club, this has been brought to the attention of many numerous times to try and make a change. Pre-COVID, a group of us met with a group of students to teach some new chairs, tried to bring back theme nights, put out face painting supplies, pom poms, and other things for them to use in an attempt to encourage positive cheers. Many parents I've spoken to agree, it brings them comfort to know that their child is safe at a school event with their friends, cheering on their home team, rather than, well, we know lots of other things they could be doing. And if they get kicked out from a game, my guess is they're not going home. Mental health is at the forefront of everything we do. As a teacher in the district, I know this. We preach it. We live it. I'm proud of that. I know we work hard to make it a focus, but you must agree with me that kids need this now more than ever. They need to feel normal. They need to feel safe. They need to feel that they belong. We preach to them that this is a safe place, yet we ask them to leave or take a sign away from them that we deem inappropriate. Well, I'm in no way condoning inappropriate behavior. I'm just asking that we cut them a break, let them be kids, provide the safe environment we talk about, focus on their mental health, and provide some normalcy. We need to work together to find a balance, a supportive, appropriate, realistic, focused, safe space, best for all students, even at our sporting events. Thanks for listening.
Do we have anyone else this evening?
Hi, I was wondering if I could get some tech help before we start. Would that be possible? Could you pull up the athletics page? Would that be possible? Please, and thank you. Yep, and if you scroll down to, or you get down to modified season two. Okay, that's just about it, I think. Where it says masks at the bottom. Yep, there we go. Thanks. Okay, my name is Linda Burkhard. I'm a retired teacher from Whitney Point and a lifelong resident. First of all, thank you for whoever got the emails onto the school webpage. Thank you very much. I did notice that. I just could not be at the, the last meeting to say thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about masks again because that seems to be one of the things looming in the forefront. The Nassau County Executive Bruce Blakeman on Thursday signed an executive order that would give school districts the ability to decide on mask policy for their own school. So here's a precedent. Here is a county executive for a massive number of schools taking a very bold step for school districts to empower them to be able to make the decisions which is best for their school district. So I hope that people will take notice of that and follow it. I've previously provided large amounts of mask studies. The most important thing to remember is that viruses are like point zero five to two point two microns in size. And an N95 mask only protects up to point three microns. So you have to know that the masks do not work, not the ones that the kids are wearing, the ones they hand out at the door. They don't work. The fibers are too big. And on boxes, if you read a box, actually, I'll read it to you. There we go. Not tested for protection against COVID-19 or other viruses. Do not use in a surgical setting or where risk of infection is high. Well, that's why we're doing all of this because it's so easy to catch it. Well, there it is. It's not black and white, it's blue and white, but there it is. Do not use in pressure a presence of flammable gas or heat source. So really, they don't work against COVID-19. The New York State Commissioner, of course, Betty The New York State Commissioner, of course, Betty Rosa pushed back against it, saying, and I quote, "School boards will follow all legal requirements." Well, the masks and masking are emergency use authorization only, which means that they cannot be legally forced upon anyone without informed consent. There's your informed consent. They don't work. And it's all based, of course, upon the Nuremberg Code. There's Governor Hochul spoke out and said that the mask were New York State law. That's not true. Nothing has been legislated in this state, nothing. So I'm not sure where she's coming from on that. If you look at our own school website, this is like, well, one of the questions I have, if you read the mask. Required to be worn at all times inside except when directed by a staff member or doing it during mask breaks and aerobic activity. So right next door is a basketball game. I'm pretty sure that's considered aerobic activity. And you're putting stuff on their face so they can't breathe? It just, it doesn't make any sense. Kudos to those kids that put them under their chins. They want to breathe. But I'll pick it up when I get my next three minutes. But I wanted to point that out because I don't think there's anything on there that stipulates what is considered aerobic activity. You know, are we looking at their um target heart rate, their oxygen consumption, their respiration rate? If their CO2 is starting to build behind the mask, what's considered aerobic activity? Thank you. I'll be back.
Is there anybody else would like to speak at this time? Okay, thank you very much for everybody who did come forward. Again, there will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. Next up is commendations.
Thank you. And we have many, many. Um, start right off with the high school chorus students. Um, Logan Griffith and Angie Smith for their acceptance into 2022 B C M E M A All County Chorus for grades seven through nine. Congratulations to them. High school chorus student Owen Hubbard for his acceptance into the 2022 Zone Three Area All-State Chorus for grades 10 through 12. Mr. Matthews and the Tyod Niobr River Side Academy Fourth and Fifth Grade Chorus for their delightful winter concert held on December 15th, 2021. Mrs. Pollan and the TRA Sixth Through Eighth Grade Band for their festive winter concert held on December 20th, 2021. The anonymous donor who allowed the purchase of books for the CEA and Mrs. Guzman and her two helpers who donated their time and arranged for the distribution of the new books to kindergarten through third graders prior to winter week. It was a nice uh holiday celebration for them. Uh, to Mrs. Williamson and the Christmas Winds, uh, who brought back our uh high school students and the lovely music through our hallways. It was a joy to have them uh return to that practice that has been a longstanding tradition. Thank you to all of them. The High School Community Service Club for making holiday gift baskets for the Whitney Point Senior Center. High school student, uh, faculty and staff for collecting 350 food items for the Whitney Point Food Pantry. Ms. Lawrence and Gillian Sattlemeyer, PTA President for organizing a holiday card gift drive for the Whitney Point Senior Center and all the CEA students, faculty and staff who made cards for this event. Mr. Hartley and the Whitney Point High School Student Council for preparing and distributing holiday food baskets for 65 local families, uh, from the donations from local businesses, Catholic charities, and donations of time from several people who helped to make this possible. Community members Nikki Hoppus and Mike Reynolds for organizing and assisting with the Whitney Point Holiday Health Program. This provides gifts to families in need within our community for young children. Donations come from local businesses and community members. To Brittany Newland, Tanya Ellerson and the Lyle Fire Department for organizing a holiday uh program which provides gifts to families in need within our community for children of all ages through donations from local businesses and community members. So many people doing so many wonderful things. Page. Hey, Goresel, St. Patrick's Church and the Catholic Charities for their organization of a holiday gift giving program, which provides gifts to families in need within our community, again, with local businesses and community members contributing to that. Whitney Point High School Senior Kaylee Lynch, who has received an honorable mention in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for her drawing titled Impermanence. And you can see it on display right next to you there. Um, this is a highly competitive national event and includes works from students all over the country. Art chosen in the Southern Tier will be on display at the Are Not Art Museum in Elmira beginning February 1st for the 78th Annual Scholastic Art Awards Exhibition. Piece of work right there. Congratulations. That's it. A lot.
Okay, old business, we have none. Um, new business brings us to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Donna. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? For reasons of economy inefficiency in the operation of the district and the district schools, the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District hereby creates one new full-time tenure track teaching assistant position effective January 3rd, 2022 as follows. Um, the title will be Teaching Assistant. The tenure area is Teaching Assistant. May I have a motion, please? I have Kathy and Danette. Any questions or comments?
This is our first Teaching Assistant position in our district. Um, this comes, um, as it's associated with a grant that we uh were awarded that is focused on work-based learning for high school students. Um, and we had one of our teacher aides who went ahead and got herself certified as a teaching assistant. So we're very happy about this. Exciting.
Any questions from the board?
No, I just want to note that for those who don't understand, Teaching Assistant is a certified position and it's just a little bit below, you know, bachelor's degree, but it's helping somebody get where they want to get. I really appreciate the fact that our school will be with this.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, create three positions of Licensed Practical Nurse effective January 3rd, 2022 and subject to meeting Licensed Practical Nurse Schools' Civil Service requirements. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Uh, this too is a first time for our district. Um, we have discussed this actually over a number of years. Uh, the health needs of our students in general have increased within the district. Um, but during this era, that has become even more acute. So Licensed Practical Nurses are going to be working with the nurses in the nurse's office to assist them um in keeping our environment health and managing student wellness and some things related to COVID certainly in the, in the short term.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question. Stephanie, it might be to go ahead and say. So this is Licensed Practical Nurse. What if a RN wanted to apply for this position? Is this going to stop that person from getting a job here because of over qualifications of a higher degree?
Well, I mean, we're not replacing our, our ends with LPNs, yes.
If an RN wanted this position, does that disqualify them because they are above the LPN level?
We would have to make an adjustment to the position and then the title. If there was, I mean, if there was a scenario without, would happen. I mean, it is a very different, you know, it's a certification. And, you know, this pay scale is very different. And so, I mean, if that, if that was the case, and I mean, it's certainly something we would consider, we'd probably have to have some kind of special, you know, MOA for that. Yes, they would not be able to have this title, this specific civil service title.
I understand the civil service part. I'm also looking at part for our position here and in the school as we go forward. I would hate for somebody who's even more qualified, who just doesn't want to have, we have the pressure of an RN anymore, but would love to have this position and they have. So I just want us to make sure we're thinking about that in the broader area.
I mean, you know, we have, certainly have had scenarios where we've had actual certified teachers who have chosen to take jobs in, you know, other kinds of jobs, right? Because they didn't want to be a classroom teacher. So yeah, we would have to look into the fact that we've created this position within this particular civil service title and then we would have to, you know, make an adjustment at a meeting if that scenario did. I mean, if that, certainly the more qualified a person was, the better for the district. So we would have to make some changes, but we could do that.
So it's a new adventure for us. So I want to make sure we're opening the doors broadly.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Retirement resignation. Um, approve the retirement resignation of Kelly Brown, Full-Time Teacher's Aid effective January 31st, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy and Danette.
So Kelly Brown was hired in September of 1998, 1998 as a teacher's aide. In her over 20 years with the district, she has been a smiling face, truly, always, around the CEA from supervising in the cafeteria to, for years, helping in the computer lab, and not just helping, running the computer lab, supporting in various classrooms and managing an area of student dismissal. Her kind presence and willingness to lend a hand wherever needed has been so appreciated. Kelly will be missed by the CEA family, students, faculty and staff. Happy retirement to Kelly. She's a joy.
I had the pleasure of working with Kelly while I subbed, and she was, she was a delight. You know, one of my favorite people to work with and the district was very lucky to have someone like her and I hope we can find words to replace her in the future.
Any other board members? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Vita Tuppi, Teaching Assistant in the Teaching Assistant tenure area effective January 12th, 2022. Someone, thank you, Danette. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Shirley Hawley, Part-Time Food Service Helper effective January 12th, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? I'm sorry. No, I can't distinguish faces from this.
Congratulations, Vita. Thank you.
I didn't, I, I can't distinguish faces at that distance, so it's like.
Sorry. No, I just want to thank the district for giving me the opportunity and encouragement to do this. So I thank you.
Thank you. It'll be interesting to see how it all works out. It's something new and different, so. That doesn't, thank you. If she was sitting in this front chair, I could have seen it was her, but beyond that, forget it. Um. All those in favor for hiring Shirley Hawley as a part-time food service helper? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Michael Maury, Part-Time Food Service Helper effective January 12th, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Lori Work, Bus Monitor, effective January 12th, 2022. May I have a motion? I have Tom and Kathy. Any questions or comments? Yeah. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Okay, approve the appointment of Kylie Kaminsky, Licensed Practical Nurse, effective January 18th, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Donna. Okay, mine has been crossed out and says the 18th. Okay, so the 18th is correct. Okay.
Only she needs the right one.
Okay, um, any questions or comments? Is Kylie here? I don't want to ignore anybody again. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Samantha Dacalovich, Licensed Practical Nurse, effective January 12th, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? Is Samantha here? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Morgan Smith, Licensed Practical Nurse, effective January 31st, 2022. Thank you, Danette. And a second? Thank you, Kathy. Is Morgan here? Is there anything you'd like to? Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? I think my batteries are falling. The red light keeps going on. Okay, we have one item on the agenda. Approve the appointment of Crystal Spencer, Full-Time Teacher's Aid, effective January 12th, 2022. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Is this filling a specific? It's not like Kelly's position and it's, it's going.
Not, not Kelly Brown, but a previous Kelly who died. That's okay. Well, the fam just went on behind you, so. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, um. Approve the following grade department chairperson and team leader for the 2021 to 2022 school year. For the nurses, Jessica Burke. Thank you, Donna. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the seven memorandums of agreement between the Whitney Point Central School District and the Whitney Point Teachers Association, effective number November 23rd, 2021. May I have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Any abstain? Approve the memorandum of agreement between the Whitney Point Central School District and the Whitney Point Association of Clerical Employees, effective December 28th, 2021. May have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Did I hear Brian? I'll put Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following low bid contractor in relation to the 2021 to 2022 capital outlay project and authorization for the superintendent to issue a letter of intent to said contractor. Plumbing contractor Evans Mechanical, Inc. Base bid was one hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Total contract to release, one hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. May have a motion? Thank you, Kathy. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Is this part of the, the little mini capital projects?
Yep, and you'll see that it's a hundred thousand dollar capital outlay. And again, back when we planned this last year, that was well within the scope of the project. We did the bids back in December and amazingly, we had six competitive qualified firms all put in, which is a very large number for a small project. Last few years, we've been doing these. We sometimes only get one or two at the most. But all of them were extremely high. They range from this one fourteen up to one thirty-five. And going back with the architect and the engineers and diving into everything, the scope and the cost and materials literally jumped up thirty thousand. We looked at this time last year. So we had two options where we could just reject it and not do the work. But again, it's, it's, it's an important part of what we're trying to do. And this is to replace the commercial hot water heater, CRA, which is in need. So basically, we had a hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. This did come in, you know, roughly twenty-five thousand higher than anticipated. So what that would be is the general plan, the maintenance budget would basically offset that hundred thousand dollar capital outlay project. And again, we're in a decent position to do that this year. So that's why we're recommending to still continue the work.
And it sounds like it's a case of we could take care of it now for twenty-five thousand dollars more, or we could do it down the road for a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Because we could include damage and stuff if it fails.
Correct.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Superintendent update?
Let me see, it says COVID update. Somebody, it will not say COVID on there, that would be nice. Just to give you some updates on what's been happening, much, much has been happening in the COVID world as it pertains to schools and how we function. I typically try and wait as long as I can, within reason, to try and get the most recent updated information before I share that with families. And, and we have bi-weekly meetings with faculty and staff to try to keep them updated. Even, you know, even with regular communication, it, it's unbelievable how quickly things change. Just some basic shifts that have happened. The New York State has. Well, first, they, they sent out a ton of COVID tests into communities. And you may have seen that there were giveaways in the libraries and the, and the parks and through school systems. The idea was to sort of do like this mass screening and sort of catch cases early on. But there is also, that also represented a shift in approach, really, to change this public health situation into a situation where the public takes more responsibility for management. The idea is to get tests in the hands of families for them to monitor health, to report themselves. They've created an automated system that instead of the county having contact tracers, who are the people who worked with us in the past, they now have an automated system so that people can monitor themselves. If they find a positive test, they're supposed to go onto a portal, report it there. They are not issuing quarantines. We understand at this time in the same way that they have in the past, which changes what we are supposed to do because they are asking us to still look for contacts in school. But as you may imagine, we don't have the authority to quarantine. So we're, we're not really sure where that leaves us. And we've had meetings and meetings with the Department of Health and they, our local Department of Health is saying they're getting changing guidance from the state. So we're in this very strange limbo time, which can be a little bit disconcerting for families, certainly, and for, for our faculty and staff. The good part of it is that there's an effort to try and not have students out of school when they are well, which is great. We, we know that we've had many, many students who've had repeated quarantines, who've had to miss important events, who have not been able to participate in athletics at important times in their lives when they've been well. So we applaud that, but there's. The changing rules are enough to, you know, to get frustrated people, to say the least. We. We, there is going to be a test to stay option, but right now, there's, if you test to stay, which means, which in theory would be great because even if you're determined to be a contact, that you could test before school and never miss a beat. Like you could test in school and not have to leave school. You could test on a schedule afterwards, but. It doesn't allow students to participate in after-school activities. And so that's, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense to a lot of people. So it's just, we're in this flux time. There's a definite shift in approach so that governmental agencies won't be managing it as much. And it will be just a, a community public concern, you know, like a, any other kind of infectious disease would be managed and there would be efforts to educate. It's not really clear where it leaves schools, though. And so we're, you know, we're trying to, to always stand on top of what the information is, make sure that we're following directives and communicating that with families and with students and staff. But it's not, you know, it's a little bit of a challenge right now. So there's some good news in that and some, you know, frustrations for people. We're, the biggest thing that we're saying is that, you know, try to think about this like you would any other infectious disease. And if you are monitoring your own health, but you try and keep distance, wash your hands, you know, not anybody to not come to work if you're not well so that, you know, you're, we're not spreading things. That's probably the best course of action right now. And our hope is that as we, this progresses, even though the numbers are so high right now that we can try to minimize the interruptions for faculty and staff and for our students while also maintaining a safe and, and healthy school environment. That's our goal always, but you know, it's a little bit bumpy right now. Let's start with a. Have any questions?
Thank you, Julian. So the test to stay, do they take one test and they can stay in school? If they were a contact, but not showing symptoms?
So the, the, I, so we got notified that New York State endorsed test to stay, which originally the CDC proposed. And New York State endorsed a process where you could test to stay if you tested three times. And if it was on a school day, there would be like a pattern that you would do it, like spaced out in a way that makes sense within the first seven days after what would be your, your quarantine period. So if you're a contact, you're, you're quarantined. If you're positive, then you're isolated. Slightly different. So, yeah, so in that, what, what was proposed is that you would have to, we would have to know soon enough so that you still had, could do three tests within that seven days. If, if those days that were school days, you had to do it before you came to school that day so that, you know, you can monitor and make sure you were well before you came to school and you would have to be symptom-free, yes. But you, so you were excluded if you, we found out too late. Like if we found out day six, you couldn't do it. And it also did not include participation in after-school activities.
So it's eliminating those. So even if they do test to stay, they pass all three of their tests, they can come to school. One day, but they can't go to their practices.
And they can participate in course and band and athletics in their phys ed class, but they can't participate in after-school activities.
Was there any?
There's pushback. I, you know, there's a lot of pushback all across the state on that. But so in addition to that, right after that was approved, and I don't want to get into so many details and waste everybody's time, but they then changed the quarantine period. And at first, New York didn't adopt that, but then they did. So now there's a five-day quarantine period and a five-day isolation period again. So if you are well after that, that you can then return to work or, you know, school as long as you wear what they call a well-fitting mask. But so, but right now, our understanding, we thought that, well, that meant that the test to stay would be within that five days. That's what we heard in our county first. So we would be, and we thought that we'd have like a two-day testing window so kids could stay in school. And we petitioned to make sure that it was after-school activities also. But right, we just were told actually last night that they're leaving, it's seven days. So right now, your choice would be, if you're a contact, that you could quarantine for five days and miss everything. Or you can do test to stay for seven days and test three times, but not participate in after-school activities. And then to complicate things even further is that the, you know, the, what is, if you're vax, if you're fully vaccinated, you're exempt, as long as you're symptom-free, from quarantine. And, but what fully vaccinated means? Well, right, and the CDC says one thing, you have to be boosted. New York State, originally, our county said that's true also. But now New York State is saying, well, no, we're not really saying. I mean, so it's like, it's, it's every single day and more than one thing a day changes. So, yeah, so for you, as, you know, with your family trying to make decisions, I mean, we're, we're trying to communicate this, but we sound like we're all over the place. It's, it's, it's very hard to manage. I mean, like I said, I, I think it's good to try and normalize, but getting there right now and working with all these entities that make the rules is, is very frustrating.
Can I write, Julian, that you also have the other factor that if somebody has tested already positive for COVID, they can't be tested for ninety days?
They can't be tested with a PCR test. They can be tested with an antigen test, right? And that's, you know. Yeah. And, and so home testing is great, but there's like, it, it just means that there's no way. And, and so up till now, we could not contact trace or, or notify anybody of anything until we got a confirmation from the Department of Health because they're, again, the authorized health agency, not us. But now because there's home testing, you have, the, it has to be reported into that portal and the, the county has to let us know in some way. And that's not really working very well because that's a whole new system. So it, it's, it's, it's confusing for a lot of people right now. Where, you know, I understand the reason for the shift, but it's very bumpy right now. Yeah. We meet every week with the Department of Health on Thursdays. You know, sometimes we get a better understanding in those meetings and sometimes we don't. Thanks.
Okay, this brings us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Please remember that the caveats that I read at the first opportunity remain in place for the second opportunity. That being said, is there anybody who would like to speak at this point?
Okay, I heard some interesting things. A disturbing thing was that you can't tell who people are from a distance with a mask on. And yet our teachers are expected to be able to identify students down the hallway. That can't be very easy at this point in time.
Linda, I was speaking of the fact that it has nothing to do with my mask, but that I need glasses.
Well, I think teachers, in addition, that's what I immediately thought, was that you just had trouble because of the mask and I totally get it.
No, it has nothing to do with the mask. If I had my mask down, I still would not be able to focus on a face.
Point taken, point taken. Yep. But just cut them some slack, I think, if they really can't pick out who somebody is. And Cheryl, kids do need to feel normal again. There's no question about that. And that's why I've been coming and trying to, try to affect some change. My first question, I think, after looking at the, the mask mandate that the school has on their website, again, I go back to the aerobic activity. These kids should not be playing any athletic endeavor wearing a mask. It's right on our own webpage. And I know people were not aware of it. I wasn't aware of it until I happened to come across it looking for the game the other night. Why are we not testing? If we want to test, why are we testing for natural immunity? That would solve a whole lot of problems, don't you think? We know that natural immunity is up to twenty-seven times better than vaxxed and boosted immunity. We know it doesn't last. And I think it's a travesty in this country when other countries around the world recognize natural immunity. Some of these kids have probably had COVID, have antibodies, and nobody even knows. So if you want to test, test for immunity. It only makes sense. And yes, trying to explain this stuff is ridiculous. I hope you're sick of it. Because it is ridiculous. And there are people who will back you if you want to take a different track. There's science that will back you. I just, I don't know how else to try to lend support. I try to educate, point out things, follow the science. Talking about the five-day quarantine, nurses all over TikTok are posting how they're being called back to work when they're still testing positive and they're sick, they're symptomatic. Come on! You know, we have to get with it and decide that this is not about health. My father was in the hospital and it was pretty hard to sit and listen to a nurse out there at that station packing her lungs up. But she was at work taking care of my father. It was a little uncomfortable. You know, I just, there's so many things that are just so wrong. So what I want to do is just close with some of the legislation that is possibly coming to the floor in Albany. Okay, these are all assembly bills. There are a considerable number of Senate bills that are very, very similar. Okay, one is forced COVID shot mandates to attend school. It's in the Health Committee. There is another one that forces all adult vaccine records into a state database. Why? That's for the adults. Forced COVID shots for college, we're seeing that. Forced flu shots to attend school and preschool and daycare. Talking about three- to five-year-olds. Flu shots. Eliminates religious exemptions for work and college. I heard a teacher from New York City who lost his religious exemption case because the Pope has said to take the vaccine. Therefore, there is no basis to get a religious exemption. That's where we're headed. Eliminates parents' consent to shots when a child reaches fourteen years of age. Eliminates parents' right to consent to STD shots for children of any age. My time's up.
Just, I would like you to finish your thought.
There's just, um. I wasn't sure if there were one or two more. Um. They retracted the bill where the governor was going to be allowed to imprison without trial anyone that she considered a threat to public health. But that, I think, is supposed to be retracted from the floor. So that's a future that we need to be aware of and to be considering. And it's not good. Parental rights are being stripped away. Our kids are being forced to do stuff that is not healthy physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually for them. And I just wish more people would speak up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Thank you to everybody who did come forward. I'm assuming we do not need a second executive session. So we are going to adjourn the public. I'm assuming we do not need a second executive session, so we are going to adjourn the public. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
Is there something else on this agenda that we haven't picked up?
No board action.
So that will bring us to Board of Education comments. Thank you.
Go ahead. You go first.
Just, yeah, I I just wanted to thank everybody who came tonight to speak. This certainly, some of you know, has been a topic of conversation, looking at our, yes, very old athletic eligibility policy. I think, you know, I remember very well when that was developed, and I think everybody had the best of intentions. I just want to know that we are listening to you and taking it very seriously and going to review that. Also, would like to, you know, invite your participation in looking at that and also looking more broadly at our culture and our norms at athletic events. But we'd like to have as many people involved as possible. So thank you for all who are here and everybody else who hopefully will be part of that process. We're hoping like within the next week to sort of map out some type of timeframe for that. But thank you for your very thoughtful comments.
So mine was basically on the same thing that Joanne had to say. I just want to thank everyone who came forward on that. Definitely, I watch the sports activities and I see that. And when you said 1991, I agree. One of our board goals are to become part, to have a better ability to communicate both with our students and our community. And I agree with Joanne, it's not something that can be set on the back burner. It needs to be something that is pushed forward because our students have gone through a very traumatic event, so have the parents. And I see it at the college. I mean, we've changed the way we teach. We have decided, you know, it's not all about five assignments. It's sometimes about three assignments that are making productive goal-setting activities that children are learning. So I agree that maybe, Joanne, like you said, you're, you have it right on the forefront. Maybe even some of us board members could get involved, and we can get students who want to have a voice be heard and do some of those. We were thinking about having like a, I don't know, we can do food or breakfast or something, have a meeting together with students and find out what we need to do to help with the culture. I know several board members would be more than willing to try to help with that and look at that policy and also the code of conduct for spectators. We've seen both negative and positive, and I know a few of you have seen international activities. Sometimes it just shocks me that you can be in a monster international field and never see the negativity sometimes that you see in other places. So I really hope that we can do something for this, and I just want to acknowledge that very much. And I do thank you, Mrs. Burkhardt, for everything you say, and but we have to keep going with what we can do right now. So, but thank you.
Okay, so am I skipping anything else? Okay, I'm, and I am sorry that I skipped that. It is now 7:40. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Kathy. I'm second. Chris? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? And thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I know it's cold and latish, but we do appreciate you being here.